We'll text those coordinates.
Good evening, I will call to order the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, Leavenworth City Council meeting. And we will start with the pledge allegiance. Travis, will you lead us on?
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a roll call, Anne Hesford.
Sharon Waters.
Zeke Reister.
Shane Thayer.
Travis McMaster.
Mike Fodder.
And I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Strand this evening from our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by Shane. All those in favor? Some unanimously. Alright, there's a couple of agenda amendments that we're going to need to make. So action item number seven, uh, we will be removing, it's not quite ready for council action tonight. And discussion item number nine will also be removed due to staff illness, which was associated with our study session that was canceled today. Um, so those are the two amendments. Can I get a making to approve our consent agenda as amended?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor? And pass unanimously. Alright, I'd like to just do a quick update for those in attendance today. I encourage you to be respectful of each other and acknowledge that it is okay to disagree. Prior to making comments, you must be recognized by the chair. Please address the council as a whole and not individuals. And please keep your comments focused on the topic being discussed. So with that, are there any comments from the public that are not on the agenda this evening? Please state your name and your address.
Ron Johnson, June twenty fourth, Pennsylvania. On, uh, the study session that was canceled, the whole study session was on the snow sidewalk removal. If the Public Works Director continues to bring to the council without consideration for the, uh, major problem with sidewalks, the, uh, statement that the, uh, of that dialogue was that the, uh, snow removal, uh, point of it, the whole point of considering this is the ultimate goal of ensuring safe, accessible, and ADA compliant pedestrian facilities throughout the year. The snow is not the majority of the year. Uh, currently, we have sidewalks that are obstructed with low hanging trees, they're obstructed partially or completely with shrubs and plantings. Uh, they, they have, uh, steps in them that don't comply with ADA and, uh, cars, residents regularly park on the sidewalk, and that's just within block of my house. So the rest of the city is, I'm sure, the same way. And so I'm not sure why, uh, Public Works keeps bringing this item that came from the previous Public Works Director when for the majority of the year, uh, the sidewalks are not safe, accessible, and ADA compliant. And having brought some of those issues to the Public Works Director, it was explained that the city is not at all interested in dealing with those unless a resident brings it to the city and says, there's a problem here. But there's a problem everywhere that all of the city people see as they drive around. And I would think that all city workers who want safe, accessible, and ADA compliant sidewalks. So I'm just asking that the city council perhaps provide direction to the city that perhaps they should look at uh, do a survey of the sidewalks and identify all of the non-ADA compliant, uh, locations on all of the sidewalks in the city before they add more regulations that apply for a piece of the year when the city's not taking care of it for most of the year. It seems foolish to spend time alone. So I, I, that was, that was my, um.
Thanks, Ron.
Uh, Kurt Peterson. Eighteen hundred, twelve seven hundred.
Please.
Uh, Mayor Proton, City Council and staff, um, I'm here to address you tonight in, uh, regards our representing uh, the Upper Valley Aquatics boosters, um, and speak on behalf of the pool. Uh, specifically to the topic of a, uh, summer splash bash that we are planning. Um, we're all very disappointed, and I'm sure you guys are equally disappointed about the delays and the challenges with the opening of the pool, um. And while I look forward to better understanding the details and the specifics associated with, uh, those delays, I'm not here to talk about that. Uh, I'm actually here to look forward and talk about that splash bash party. And I'm hoping to make a little lemonade out of, uh, some lines here in the situation. Um, my hope is that there might be, um, some super lining with the, uh, delay in the opening of the pool and the fact that some of the budget is not spent uh, for maybe, uh, lifeguards and others, uh, during that time period. And I wanted to ask on behalf of, uh, U-VAB, the Upper Valley Aquatics boosters, if some of that budget might be able to be deferred to, um, help, uh, uh, pay for some of the costs associated with hosting the summer splash bash. Um, this is something that we held last year, it was extremely, uh, successful. Um, but it was also funded, uh, out of the personal goodwill of those that are part of the Upper Valley Aquatics. Um, there was no funding from PRSA or the city for any of that. Um, and so I was hoping that, uh, it might be something that the city council, uh, because my understanding is that this would be a decision of the city council um, would think about, uh, diverting or, or branding, or I don't know what the right terminology is, but providing some funding. Um, to give you some understanding of what the kind of funding we're looking for, just to, for frame of reference. Um, these are rough numbers based on last year, um, but roughly about nine hundred dollars for food and beverages. Uh, that included hot dogs, both regular and vegan, um, as well as chips, sodas, um. About three hundred dollars for prizes, which was, uh, a big part of the day. There were a lot of, uh, activities and events for the kids, which included, uh, prizes. Uh, roughly three hundred dollars for tables and chairs rentals. Um, this was not including, uh, tents that we got from the other, uh, nonprofit, the Upper Valley Swim Team. They, they loaned that to us. So this was just the chairs and tables. And about a hundred and fifty, uh, dollars in miscellaneous, uh, balloons, decorations, and other things. Um, so looking at about a total budget around sixteen fifty, uh, total. So if you look at that number, that's roughly about the cost of one lifeguard, uh, hourly wage, uh, for two weeks, which is about the time the pool hasn't been open. So maybe there's something there. I just ask you to consider, uh, helping out. Thanks.
Kurt, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know at some point you've had, we're seeking, uh, five oh C three.
Yes.
How's that? What's the status of that?
Uh, we are, continue to do that. We are officially now a fiscally sponsored five oh one C three. Our fiscal sponsor is the, uh, swim team, the Upper Valley, uh, swim team. Uh, they are a five oh one C three themselves and making sponsors. So what that means is that, yes, we can receive funds just like a five oh one C three, all the documentation signed and everything. Um. What needs to happen though is it needs to reference the DIN number for the swim team.
Okay, yeah.
And then, uh, and then we do all the, uh, the C work.
Agreed. Uh, Kurt, what's the timeline on that splash bash?
Uh, well, it's kind of, it's very, it has to be there. So there's a, there's a a careful dance we're all working on. We, we're keeping our fingers crossed that the pool does open over the next two weeks, and I don't have any inside knowledge of that, perhaps others do. Uh, but we wanted to target July eleventh.
Okay.
Uh, we think that that gives enough buffer to allow some of the challenges to get out of the way, but also not so far out that, uh, it won't still feel like a, kind of a grand opening of the pool back then.
Okay.
Kurt, pardon my naivety, but, uh, who's the splash bash for?
Uh, great question. Uh, it's meant for the entire, uh, area that the pool serves. So that's the entire PRSA area, which includes primarily, of course, Leavenworth, but also for Shasten and up to Trumpstic, uh, area a little bit as well. And when we do, uh, when we did this last year and we plan on doing it this year, we kind of did a a marketing push a little bit to, to get the word out that it's not just Leavenworth. Um, there was a lot of folks that came, um, from up the Trumpstic area, um, and, and as well as the Shastan area. Um, and it's for everybody, uh, and it's free. So the, the other thing that the, the city has done in the past is not charged for entry that day too. So that's ultimately a big part of it.
So council, um, Kurt did reach out to me and the PRSA board with this request. And I let them know that once the funds from the PRSA are delivered to the city property taxes, it's actually the city council's fund and we operate the pool. So that's why I suggested that he bring this request to you tonight. Um, if you want to entertain that request, my suggestion would be that we, uh, pay for whatever expenditure you're willing to authorize up to, uh, directly out of the pool fund. That way, there's no transfer of money necessarily. We'll just have to work together about how to make those purchases.
Yeah.
Um, we do have some city credit cards, so we can definitely work that out if you guys want to entertain this.
So we have one more council meeting before the post splash bash date, but, uh, as far as getting something approved by us, what's the timeline for that?
Tonight would be kind of your direction to say yea or nay. Um, this is a small amount. It's not a major project or anything of that nature. So again, if you guys want to fund it, I would recommend that you give me a dollar threshold. And then I will work with him to make sure that all costs go directly to the city and paid for.
There's a little bit of a timeline in the sense that we are now actively starting to prepare. So we're like talking to the, uh, table rental company, trying to get a discount from them for, you know, uh, charitable reasons and that kind of thing. So that, we are moving forward.
Okay. It's well thought out and well presented with offsetting the dollars that we would spend, would have spent, um, for some of those dollars at least. It was successful last year. I mean, it was, it was a big success for the, one of the first time kind of parties we've done, I think.
Right.
Right?
I just think, right, yeah. I think we should, yeah.
Sure. Sure.
So this would be city money and not PRSA money?
No, it's, it's pool money.
Pool money. I didn't know we could do that.
So once the PRSA gives the city the property taxes, we have an interlocal agreement between the city and the PRSA.
Okay.
That allows for the city to operate the pool and spend all the dollars. So this would come out of the office supply line item of the pool's fund budget directly.
Well, if you need a yea or nay, I'd say.
I would entertain fifteen hundred dollars.
One other question.
That was sixteen fifty last year.
Yeah, Rob, Rob estimate they found expenditures from last year.
Eighteen hundred would be.
Yeah.
Is Kelly on board with this, or does she need to be?
Talked last year, that's really nice and generous.
She was on board with the idea of the splash bash. She's not been consulted about the idea of using money.
Yeah.
Would this be money that could be used for, um, you know, uh, water bales and things like that at, at the pool?
We can definitely have a discussion with Kelly about it.
Okay.
As, as Kurt did know, we're three weeks past our normal start date at this point.
Yeah.
Looking at four. So you're, you're down pretty good on expenditures. Knowing that the county did not collect all of our property taxes this year is another dilemma.
What helps be reducing the price of the season passes.
And we're going to be looking at that, that Selby was going to talk about tonight as well for you guys to consider because that is a deviation from our rate and fee schedule.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's going to be tight.
Hmm. Can we propose to use money from the general fund? Or is that?
Yeah, but honestly, I think, I think it should stay within the pool fund.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Right, I think you move it, get through in person. I mean, if that was just Kurt.
And so you know, you have, there is money and Kelly has gotten everything that she needs.
Selby and I can talk with Kelly, just to make sure everything's kosher. Tonight, basically, what we just need is whether or not you're willing to entertain some sort of donation, and I, I, I want a limit.
Yeah.
From the guy.
Yeah.
You're.
We're, we're, so Sharon.
We may not go all that way if it's Kelly's concern.
The U-VAB, which was, is associated now with the nonprofit adjacent to, I mean, this is like Kurt and friends of the pool that paid out of their personal pocket to throw a, a party, an opening party for the community, which is great. I think at some point, maybe the PRSA should have paid, should or may pay for it. So I think it's, it's worth doing it again this year and making limit eighteen hundred, Mike said, and do it again. It was a success. I think we should, and we have the monies.
Yeah. And it should be budgeted for next year, maybe. Or they can apply for eleven more funds.
So that, now they're a nonprofit, that's the idea.
You do apply next year and kind of get out ahead of the turn.
Exactly. And I told them that grant application would be coming out probably in the next month.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. Well, if you want some direction, I think you got it for, for, for us, for us doing it.
Okay.
I'm showing out eighteen hundred dollars because sixteen fifty was last year. Things have changed a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay. You don't need a formal motion. I just definitely need your approval to move this forward.
Okay.
Council, how do we feel about eighteen hundred dollars?
I feel good about it.
That's some thumbs up. Sharon?
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's, it's, I'm a greater bet. So I hope we'll see all you guys there.
Take care.
Take care.
Any other comments from the public?
There's nobody online.
Oh, okay. Alright, we will move on to our public safety reports. We can start with, we'll break you late.
Good evening, how's everybody?
Good. How are you doing?
You too. Four o'clock, here we are.
That is an early start.
Five. Seven forty seven. Uh, seven hundred and twenty seven hours with sixteen hundred. It's the hours per day. All things, you, you guys see what's your comments? Four hundred and twenty five, twenty teens. A, medication, set up thirteen clinical arrests. It's pretty quiet. This has been a big focus on the, uh, and, uh, five. Why, yeah. Steve, you'll shop with. Fifty five was last month. He's back to work. Actually, he went on baby leave. Went on baby, came back to work, baby leave. Back to work, next. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Are you allowed to update us at all on what's going on with the search for?
I don't have any more information than the, uh,
Facebook.
Press releases that are put out. They're actually being pretty detailed and given as much as they're given. That's something to get help with all. I haven't been a part of it myself because I've been acting sergeant for a virtual squad. Is he there? Stayed on and gone.
Okay, thank you.
Get all, I, I go hiking and the hills.
Really tame. Ryan, I was going to ask you, um, what's the citizens assist thing all about? There are eleven of those.
They can be a little of everything, um. All of those title will you see or something where we're, from just from the beginning of the call, they decide where they're putting it and.
Um, yeah, somebody phones this in or requests something to be done. There's kind of a citizen.
Calls, they're asking for something.
Okay.
Could be, um, well, turn, so well protected, would ended up under world rejection, so, um.
What, keys in the car.
It'd be just some, uh, spot that they're asking for something.
Hmm, okay.
Information on. I think one of them probably would have been somebody from out of town coming to the area wanting to know where they can target you. Something like that. Odd, but odd questions that don't fall in there either.
Does it have to be a call in, or is it, like, if someone, like, I know that sometimes I'll see sheriffs, like, helping someone change the tire on the side of the road. Yeah. So it doesn't have to be a call in, like, if a sheriff pulls, pulls over and, and assists a citizen, like, that would fall under that category, correct?
There's a motor assist, you know, stuff. It just depends on how we verbalize what we're doing, what, if we're stopping and assisting somebody.
Okay.
And how that all gets verbalized when the call comes in, and then whether or not we change it. A lot of times we'll change the title, let's put it to the call, but not always.
You guys, I recall last year, you're getting body cams. Is that, what, how far along in the process? You guys were getting, doing that?
They are getting close, I think.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they're actually here or not.
Okay.
Um. We have the cameras in the car and we have, not wearing it in the car. Uh, we have microphones and cameras in the cars.
Okay, yes.
So when we're on the traffic stop or we pull up to somebody's house within a certain range, we're still verbally recorded.
Yeah.
And everything in front of the car is recorded on video. So it's pretty good. So it's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um, if the, the body cams are anxiously waited.
Yeah, that's gonna be good.
I think they're, I think they're getting close.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Andy.
Great, thank you. Can I, Andy?
Madison, with our fire report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've been looking forward to this all day. I got told this morning I had to do that. I was like, you sure I'm the right person? I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, as you see, uh, W Chief's, uh, Mike Smith's out sailing his boat right now. Uh, so I'm subbing in for. Uh, so our fuels crew continues to work on the E-R-S path and the central space around homes on Fox Road. Uh, we have injured fire scenes about a month early. I think you guys have all noticed the weather's super warm, the fuel mixture is super low, low system a while, uh, would not get fired. Uh, requests for stable owners have yet to come in, being fired for extending beyond our shift or beyond local abilities to tank. We actually just sent a crew out to Walala two nights ago. They should be demoving, coming back tomorrow. Um, all open burning, including campfires closed. The Forest Service had issued stage one fire restrictions for Leavenworth, Brandon district. Uh, meaning campfires are only allowed in metal rings that establish locations on Forest Service. Um, as far as training, we sent two of our guys to a week long training in North Bend for a while, then, uh, one did the basic firefighter type two training. And another one that went and did was into boss training. I never that asked for that to get working on this year. Um, and coming out this weekend, we have five people doing to water tech class. And it's actually going to be held here in Leavenworth, which is kind of cool. Um, so looking forward to that. And let's see response. Uh, so currently this year, we are at, uh, three hundred and eleven calls, which is up from three oh six last year at this point. Uh, call volume has certainly increased since school out. We've had two working brush fires so far this season. Uh, the most recent one, actually, okay, just a second. Uh, responding on five point six to a brush fire on Second Street Road. Um, the fire was burning timber and thunderstorm. Crews from District Three, Six, Nine, DNR and Forest Service all provided personnel to fight the fire. Uh, multiple fixed means and rotor, uh, assets were reduced. Ultimately, the fire was turned over DNR and Forest Service for a new fight command until incident management team was able to override and take over management. As of May thirtieth, the fire is considered completely controlled. The fire was started by a homeowner to rekindle after initial extinguishment and spread while in danger. So that was a very long fire. Uh, it was up in some very steep terrain. It was hard to get to on foot. So the fixed means, uh, were of great help. Uh, and then most recently on six ten, we responded to a brush fire at approximately mile post ninety eight in Tomahawk Canyon. Uh, we arrived to an approximate half acre fire running up quickly, running quickly up a hill. Um, neutralized in Lake Minnachie, District Six, the Forest Service, DNR provided additional manpower requires to contain fire. Uh, SWIC provided a rotor around the airport, which aided in the efforts to slow the flame front. Uh, we were fortunate to contain the fire before dark when the crew had been pulled off the line due to rolling debris of falling trees. Uh, the fire is burning in heavy timber and thunderstorm. It appears the fire started at an encampment on the hillside. Hmm. That's it. Wow, that was lucky you're.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Alright, we will move on to resolutions, ordinance, ordinances, orders, and other business. Uh, item number eight on our agenda, task authorization number four, twenty twenty five, on hall utility engineering with RH two engineering, water main connections and upgrades. And Bradley, will you address this for us, please?
Yes, uh, city council, I request, uh, request approval of task authorization for, for RH two. And the reason for this, uh, authorization is at three separate locations in the city, Stafford Street, West Center Street, and Seagull Street. There are locations where, where the water lines are either undersized or they're not looped. There's actually gaps in the water lines in some, in some cases. So this, uh, authorization in particular is going to actually close those locations or upsize those locations. So we have proper water flow and then also increase the, uh, basically what happens, you know, at the end of the water line, you can actually stack water. So it actually helps, um, it actually helps the, the quality of the water, uh, once we leave these systems in place. Um, let's see, and also a part of this is including uh, basically a total survey, surveys of these locations as well. So you can actually want the design. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Bradley, this is just the design.
This is just the design, correct? And the, um, you know, once we go through the design, I'll have more information, you know, but, you know, at some point in time, we'll need to actually construct uh, these repairs.
We don't have any estimate of when or what the repairs will cost?
Put me on the spot. I'm going to say probably five or six hundred K, somewhere in that neighborhood. And part of the, the difficulty in actually coming up to a good cost estimate right now is I'm not entirely sure what the rest distances are.
Okay.
And Brad. Another issue is some of those roads are in fairly poor shape. So we've got a side where we want to just do a trench cut along there, or if we want to pave the whole width of the road, uh, which is fairly expensive. So those are
Right.
Those are some nuances that we're going to work out in the design process.
Well, thank you.
Are we looking to get this started this year or is this like next year kind of thing?
The design or the construction?
Uh, construction.
Uh, the construction earliest would be next, next year.
Okay.
I mean, it'll, it'll take, uh, I think we'll probably have the design complete by probably February would be my rough guess right now. Maybe students still allow, once we, once we get it approved, then I'll actually go and talk to RH two and find out exactly where it sits in there. We'll just project it.
Okay.
From a budget perspective, we, we do have a half million, uh, budgeted in the water fund for two of these three streets. So I'm going to be following up with Andy as well to, just check on the third one. But also she has in this budget a potential application to DWSRF or the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which would be a loan, not a grant.
And I'm guessing she has all that set aside for the construction portion side.
Uh, Cedar Street, it says here that if funds remain after the designs are completed on Stockton West Center, then Cedar would be addressed as well. Not sure what, why, if it, if it has a need there, then why is it so treated differently?
That's a funny situation. And, uh, turns out I just actually found, uh, local builders actually completed it in time at that location. So I'm actually, I, I've got to go through, I'm going to try to actually find the design documents, but the, the engineer who actually developed this stuff retired. So it's going to do a little digging, take a little digging, but I'm hoping to back that out of this RH two contract thing.
Um, so it, it's, there's a little Cedar Street.
We will construct it. It's just a matter of how, how we actually design the work.
If you can't find that the existing, uh, design and they run out of money on the first two, then we have to go do another task authorization.
Honestly, we're we'll probably design it in-house at that point. It's, it's a fairly straight shot. I actually know where both ends of that water line ended that, on that location. So that one's a very simple thing to do.
And so we're not going to have to come back around and, and address this later.
No, we'll, we'll, it'll, it'll be included in this project as well.
So worst case scenario, you could design it and then we could put all three into one bit of package next year.
That's, that's the plan, yes. And I think Selby has a lot of work on it. So I'm not sure if I'm going to have to.
Andy has work, not me. I'm the director. And if I read it correctly, the, the timing on this is because, uh, people are experiencing low flows in these areas, potential lawsuit. It's been.
In one location, correct.
Lawsuit's been threatened by a resident or?
I have not feel that those calls.
Not anxiety.
Yeah, written writing. But water availability was guaranteed by a previous director. And the size, my understanding is that the size of the pipes do not support delivering said water.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, there's a long stretch. I think it was a two inch line that beams multiple homes and. There was actually. If I remember right, it was off, there was a. They were breaking a lot up into at least two lots, if not three, and we promised water availability at that location. And there's just simply not capacity on the two inch line for that.
Level where city council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute task authorization number four under the two thousand twenty five on-call utility engineering contract. With R H two engineering, Inc. For the water main connections and upgrades project with a not to exceed amount of ninety seven thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars. Second.
Move by Mike, second by Dee.
Question.
Yep.
I thought you said you, that you were not interested in that company. Did I get that confused?
Are you still?
Yeah, well.
Um. They're actually one of the better firms.
Okay, I, I thought you mentioned that you weren't interested in. Some company.
There's other firms that. Don't particularly want to use any longer, but R H two is something that one.
Okay.
Yeah, they're actually, they actually have really good team.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion or questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that, that is the end of our agenda items.
Our ordinances?
Yes, we will move on to council reports. Uh, I'll start with mine.
Okay.
Um.
Seven thirty.
Last week, um, some city staff and members and a few members of the parking committee. Um, interviewed. Four different firms to be our parking garage consultants. Um. And I won't go into a lot of detail, so because details on the outcome of that, but it was a really great experience. We had four. Really great firms that we interviewed. Um. And it was, it was a great, it was a great experience to be a part of, uh, and really exciting to really be taking some steps forward towards. Parking garage here in the city, something that we've been talking about for a really long time. So it's nice to see some action and some movement there. Um. And because of those interviews, I missed my link transit board meeting, so I don't have anything to report. But I will say, having read the packet. Love and North continues to set records on ridership on, on link transit with our three different routes, um. Inner city and uh, two local routes or, or one, one local shuttle route and our express route and then our normal inner city route. And we're up, we're up above. About sixteen thousand riders a month now on, on just our. Just our, just the love and with specific route. Yeah. So Route twenty, Route one twenty-two, which is the express and then. Thirty-two, which is the shuttle that goes through town. Yeah.
I'm curious, um. One of the reasons I would think to, that that is because if you look at our tourist base coming from larger cities, they're used to mass transit. You think. Here, and again, my son takes the bus to Minnachie every single day, but. Public transportation in a rural area, it's, it's, it's good and it services a lot of people, but. People visiting totally get that and they're, they're just naturally gravitate towards mass transit. I was in Salt Lake City and took. Their train from the airport to the convention center. It was two hundred and fifty cents. It was a nice train. I sat and visited with a friend and. I could have Ubered for twenty-six dollars, but. It's right there. And so I think that it's a really great thing. I think we see that with our, our visitors. I think they appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. We did see a huge spike on our shuttle, um, that had about ten thousand riders in the month of December alone, just on our shuttle. Uh, so that was obviously tourists looking for external parking and using our shuttle system, which was really great. Uh, and more and more people are noticing that you don't have to just take the shuttle. To get around town, if you're parking further out, any, any one of our three routes leaps around. The downtown area and so it takes highway two all the way to the roundabout and back. So any bus that goes by will take you to all of those stops on highway two, which is hopefully great.
Well designed, yeah.
That's all I've got. Sharon.
I don't have much. Um, I attended the Shaline Douglas Health District meeting and, um. Since the COVID vaccine sounds like, um, it's not a good thing. We've spent a lot of time, um, talking about that. And then today, Selby. Mike and Zeke and I met at Osborne and walked through the building and talked about it and, um. I'll let that, so we do that report. And, um, the only thing is. My heat pump and furnace went out. And so that was like when it was a hundred and five degrees and all that hot. And. We tried to keep our windows open, so what wind might be out there would come in. But then with, um, the guy who. Killed his kids. You know, and we're sitting there late at night with our windows open. That's pretty scary. So several thousand dollars later. The heat pump is in there for.
Brand new system.
Brand new system.
Starting with that.
And that's it.
Nick.
Okay, so the first thing I had was real information from national meeting with, uh, in fact, Mike was putting on this one, Andy and Maggie on that. Traffic scenarios over on. Uh, the first stoplight by Martian, Martian Safeway, that whole complex. So we sat down with Maggie and, and Andy and talked about, um. Just. The impacts to come and what can be done. Um. So just, just sort of a good information gathering thing to figure out what's ahead of us in the future and, and what the city. Is doing, part of this, part of the problem. There is some stuff the city can do. Part of the issue is that it's a city highway, it's a state highway. So they control that part, but we are contributing to the. To the cluster as far as the amount of businesses that go in there. So there's, there's a lot of feeder businesses back there that are, that are coming on. So. Very worthwhile discussion. Um, on January, no, on June sixth, for better for worse, I participated in the bike and brew.
Ah, yeah.
And uh. Uh, I did finish. And uh, actually I wasn't the last one in my category, so I had that as a big win. Uh, I also took three or four naps for the next three days. That's all right. And, um, I went down to the, um, another thing that I found really viable is I went down to the, um. Y W C is June ninth, uh, Juneteenth. Uh, in Minnachie, uh, Walala Park. That was. Uh, an excellent presentation. Um. And today I participated in the. Uh, the downtown steering committee's walk through town for two hours. Uh, we discussed. Parking and traffic scenarios and just issues that coming up that was really well worth it. And I kind of, everyone came away with a really good. Better idea of pedestrian plaza issues that are there. And, uh, I heard some really good ideas come out of that whole discussion. So that was, that was really worth it. And then, uh, Sharon mentioned, uh, the, uh. Osborne meeting we had with Selby, which turned out really valuable. We talked. Just where we were and what, there's a lot of moving pieces in this thing with the. Um. Uh. Abatement issue with, um, I forget the material, uh, we're trying to get rid of asbestos and then. Uh, have a theory, actually, there's no money. That we've ever come up with for the city to deal with how we're going to do this. So this is, I figured this is a really good launch spot. For us to start considering just how we're going to make this happen. So. Time well spent. So, and standing my report.
Sharon.
I don't have much to report, but I would like to give a shout out to Shirley McLaughlin from the finance department. She's been helping me, uh. My, uh, my meter info hasn't been showing up. I've been trying to track down a leak at my house and. I have, I've had no data and it turns out she helped reach out to, uh, the company and. There was a space at the end of my username, so I could log in to the, to the get my meter info, but I wouldn't see any data.
Oh, wow.
But she helped, she helped me resolve that, so. That's, that's my report.
That's great. Yeah. Um, the parking advisory committee was pushed, canceled. The next meeting is the twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth of June. It's, I look forward to learning more about the. Interviews with the agencies. It was really cool being part of even the process with that committee going through the information and kind of pick, picking the top four and then. The guys doing the interviews. It's very exciting. Very exciting with the garage. Um, I'm curious about the Osborne. Are you creating an ad hoc committee for that? Are you guys doing something?
No, I'll be adding this to a future study session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all I have.
Mike.
Uh, see, I went to, uh, the meeting with Zeke and Andy and Maggie, uh. And that was very good. Still learning a lot, but you know, just about how we end up where we are, what can we do about it? Uh, as far as just all development, how to mitigate that for everybody involved. Uh. Yesterday, went to the enchantment stakeholders meeting that Tred coordinated, uh, W R I. And really great for people who are working hard to come up with solutions to the anticipated problems of. Overuse up there with not nearly enough staffing. My understanding is that it had up to eleven people, uh. Assigned to the enchantments, uh, summers in the past, and we have one this year. So management of human waste is the utmost concern and then obviously fire. Uh, some rangers that were present there who are no longer rangers, but. They've said they've had as many as four open campfires up there in a no fire area in the past when they actually have regular patrols. And that's just that one individual has come across that many. So, you know, imagine. Nobody's up there watching, keeping an eye on things and big, that potential for big problems for. Community, but there are a lot of people who are working that problem and, uh. I'm optimistic that we'll have some. Some boots on the ground up there in the enchantments, keeping an eye on things. Uh. Went to the downtown steering committee meetings morning as well and. That was fantastic. I'm looking forward to, uh, continuing to develop our downtown plan with that group. That at Osborne with Sharon, Zeke and. Selby, uh, also excited about that. I think. We are pushing to try and get something going, you know, uh, to bring to our community that we can utilize that, that building. Uh, so. Looking forward to having that on the study session and, uh, we can all figure out how to make that happen for our, for our people and then, uh. I think that's it.
Selby.
Thank you. So. There's a downtown steering committee meeting today and we did a little tour. There's a meeting at the Osborne with Zeke and Mike and Sharon. There's a pack meeting where we interview all the consultants. Uh, we actually chose A R C and protects, they're the same firm that is doing the down, uh, the, the, uh, Far Street Western project. Which had a ribbon cutting of July one at ten thirty A M. Uh, so that project is done and it just, the timing's right for, uh, for the A R C team. They're a small team, but, uh. That they can pick this project up because that one is, is winding down. Um, they were. There was a committee of seven people. They were everybody's top choice. Um, and there's some consultants, so they're a known quantity. We work with them. We like the work they've done. They've done a decent amount of work here in the city. They're also on the Osborne project of a space needs assessment. And, um, their sub consultants of Heffron Transportation and P C S Structural Engineering were, uh. Kind of put them over the top in terms of the, in, in the committee's eyes. So, um. I've, I've, I've reached out to them and let them know that we're awarding the project to them, um, and we're working on a, on a contract and scope for, for phase one. Which is site selection, choosing a site within a thousand feet of the gazebo, uh, to locate, on city owned land to locate a garage. Um, let's see. The river shuttle, uh, we did pick up a trailer and a, uh, and a cargo net. Yesterday, they, kudos to the parks team for, for going to O M B Bo and getting that for us. Uh, when actually Valley Shuttle will be utilizing that trailer to facilitate in the, um. In the tubing shuttle that they'll be running starting July fourth. So the fish hatchery is indeed going to be closing the parking lot starting, uh, at the end of June thirtieth, which is the end of sport fishing season. That won't be extended. We don't anticipate that people will be floating the ice floe for, um, far, very far into July. Uh, I floated it two weeks ago. It was fifteen hundred C F S. I floated it on Sunday. It was five hundred C F S. Uh, and Dave Johnson said that he doesn't put people on it below two hundred. And I think the threshold should be higher than that.
Yeah.
Where you stop putting people on that, uh, on that, uh, wither. So, um, I anticipate.
Come up again though.
It will come up when they release from the, that won't be until mid-July, but yeah, start releasing from the Alpine Lakes. Um. So let's see, I, again, I, I will be putting the Osborne, Osborne project update, um, on a future study session agenda and I, I thank you. Zeke and Chad and Mike, uh, for meeting me there. Um, and let me walk you through the updates on the project and I appreciate the passion. Um, level and worth fund applications, uh, reviewed the application draft today, uh, and we do anticipate having that released to the public in early July. With applications to, uh, early September. Um. And before I pass over, I'd like Bradley to give you a full update so you can explain where we are. Um, and when we do anticipate an opening. Um, I do, uh, want to see if the council has any opposition to us. Dropping the price of the season passes. Um, I worked it out to do a forty percent discount, uh, based on. That was based on a July fourth open or earlier. Um, and if it ends up being delayed further, I would recommend a deeper discount on the season pass. Day rates won't be affected. Um, but just for the season pass holder. So unless I hear opposition from the council about giving a discount. Pro rating it given the fact that, uh, it's going to be two thirds of the season that we're going to be open. I'd like to do that.
Sounds good.
Odds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it two thirds or is it forty percent?
Forty percent. Well, two thirds of the season, but a forty percent discount.
I will support that because user fees are not. The bulk of the revenue. It is property taxes. And the pool passes is not the bulk of the user fees. It's the daily entrance phase and July and August are the heaviest months for their user. Right. So, yeah, no, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Anything else for your question?
Uh, I just. Let you guys know the audit got underway today, uh, in person. I. Totally had a leave at six thirty today, so I could make it to this meeting and each date I'll wait till six thirty. Wow, I get overtime for that. Uh, just want to point out on your agenda tonight, you did accept the annual report under your consent agenda. That the auditor is auditing and also my twenty-five finance report is there. Any question?
Maybe I don't have. Other than your presentation? So our presentation panel. And so guys, and I'm, I'm on it's open. Uh, yeah, I'll get the wildfire symposium tomorrow at Minnachie at the college stuff. I get to be on a panel with some other awesome folks, talk about how the city of Love More is addressing wildfire impacts and environmental effects.
I guess you guys want to know about the pool.
We're all ears.
Um, yeah, is it good or bad? Uh, so fundamentally, this has been one of the most frustrating projects I've ever managed, actually. There's, there's a lot of reason for it, but, um, we. Had a, had a contractor and I use the term had because we essentially have stopped talking to. The contractor who was doing the work, they just have been non-responsive. So we actually brought in another contractor and basically they started, uh, Monday to redo the plumbing. Because essentially what the previous contractor had done, um, was wrong. So the contractor, uh, did work yesterday. We actually tested it today. There was a minor leak in it, so they fixed it. And then, um, we're letting the glue set overnight and then, um. We're going to test it again tomorrow, but once that plumbing gets done, we should be able to back flush the system. Which would allow public works full staff to start. Running chemicals and filling the hole up and getting, uh, ready. There is another slight issue. It's, uh, B F D still needs programming, but we're, we're working on that in parallel and won't impact, uh, anything. So hopefully tomorrow I'll be able to give a subtle confirmation, um, for an opening date. Once we turn the water on and it doesn't leak ultimately. Turns, turns out that. Everything is going wrong, I'm saying. Uh, literally the piece of new pipe that we purchased, we. You can't see these things, but you pressurize it, you know, and next thing you know, it starts leaking in it because it was a small crack that, you know. I've never seen this happen in my entire life, but it just so happens. That just on, on this full project, it does. And if you don't perform again, and also just. One thing we have not paid a cent to the previous, uh, full contractor. Uh, we, we will end up having to pay up something, but not as much as they did, as well. So that's, and that's going to be a big argument then. Then the full contractor that I have here, so.
Bradley, this pipe came in, was that just a faulty pipe from the get-go? I mean.
Yeah, so you never, I mean, yeah, literally I've. Seen thousands of feet of this stuff and I've never seen what it did out here today. Right, I mean, so maybe it just fell during shipping or something, or maybe it's got cracked or something, but you couldn't see the crack and, uh, it didn't.
We'd go over.
So it's just good. But the good news is the contractor we have here now, they're super responsive. They literally went, got, uh, you know. New material right in the air and actually installed it today. new material right in the air and actually installed it today. Hopefully, I think this draws tomorrow will be a much better shoot.
Bradley, just, I'm confused. I mean, with the original contractor, I mean, was there any kind of like oversight from the Public Works Department on how they were doing the work or?
Oh, I figured out there every day they were there, but fundamentally they would show up and then I'd go back to my office to do work and then I'd go back out and two hours later they leave. They're out of Tri-Cities and they would just go back to the Tri-Cities and I'd call and and try to get them back up here. And they'll be out there next Thursday. And so it's just, this has not been a high priority for, for those guys. Fundamentally, I can tell you, they're losing money on projects. So they, they're treating it like.
Well, this, this was for them to fix the, the problem that they had created, correct? Or I'm just wondering how, how the problem came to be. I mean.
Yeah, that, that's probably a long discussion. I mean, there's, I mean, yeah, we could probably, we, the city probably could have done a little bit of job on the contract language. That's one thing.
Gotcha.
Two, backlog. Three, bad contractor.
Yeah.
And so you, you add all, you layer all these things upon each other. You know, four, all these pool companies are super busy right now. I mean, this, this money made money over the next, you know, from May to, you know, the end of June. I mean, that's when they do nine percent of the work. So trying to get a buck here during that timeframe is actually possible. Literally called, I was calling pool places out of Seattle or calling pool places out of Wenatchee and nobody would, you know, I mean, everybody wanted to take our money, but nobody ever wanted to show up and actually start giving us advice to be the orders coming. That, that's something. And I mean.
The original work, right? Like.
The original work, correct.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Bradley.
So the pump is, the pump is fine. No problem with it.
The pump is running.
And the basket and it catches everything. So it's that, that length of pipe where the backwash moves?
Yeah. So we put two new sand filters down there.
Okay.
Those are in place and they're operational.
Okay.
And the way that was plumped originally was wrong. So it didn't work properly. So we, once we started trying to, you know, discuss this, 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 the plumbing that was wrong. You know, that's the contractor, you know, this, they, you know, came apart, will be up there next week, or something happened, you know, it's just, it's one thing after another. So. But the VFD is working with the pump. It's working. The pump is working. So that's good. Sand filter is actually filtering over. It doesn't need to be back flushed now. So we're, I, I think tomorrow if we can backwash those filters, it would be a really good show.
Bradley, Sharon, one more question. What about the, the liner files? Everything good with those or?
You know, I think all that's done, but I, I don't, don't hold me to it. I, I I know we had some city staff taking care of that and I've been focused on this contractor issue, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's been done.
Okay.
Anything else for Bradley?
This is my fifth week here. I'm starting to settle in. So actually, really, I mean, I, I've really enjoyed you know, getting to know how the city operates. And I, I, I was in the parking pool. And I'm really looking forward to supporting that ever.
Anything else to report? All right. Just one quick reminder, we do have a city council meeting next Wednesday jointly with our planning commission at seven P M. And with that, entertain, entertain a little.
Second.
Move by Shane, second in by Mike, all those in favor?
Please eat dessert too. Take them with you.
Nice work, Sheila.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
So that's a Wednesday.